I would like to call this meeting of the school committee to order and ask all of you to join with me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited in justice for all.
Thank you. I want to welcome anybody who's able to follow us on TV tonight. Thank you very much. And I want to start the meeting and ask all of you to join with me in a moment for a moment of silence. And I want to tell you that one of our longtime school employees, Kathleen Lanigan, passed away a few weeks back. Kathleen was with the Plymouth Public Schools for 30 years at West Elementary School as a parent educator. So certainly in support to her family during their difficult times and to celebrate Kathleen's life with the school committee, please, or with the school department, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. We wish Kathleen's family well in their time of need. Now we're going to move over to our student representatives. I think we have Karen and Alex with us this evening. Am I correct?
Yes. Hi.
Hi.
I hope you guys are all doing well. While Alex is pulling up another PowerPoint that we made, we decided to collaborate again and bring these two guys together from both North and South.
Okay. Wonderful.
That's good.
Okay. So just a few topics that have been happening around our schools. There's been Thursday Night Lights at North and they'll be starting at South very soon. We're going into new lesson plans for this week. And then we're going to talk about athletic achievements and about the senior class.
All right, so this week is of course week five. I know today I woke up with a bunch of Google classroom notifications, but teachers should have posted their work at nine, 9:00 AM this morning and students should plan to hand their assignments in at 5:00 PM on Friday.
So these are some of the North athletes that received Patriot Ledger All-Stars. Jack Fleet in hockey, Christian Hulin in boys indoor track, Jeff Yang in boys indoor track, Mo Offcutt in boys indoor track, Brady Sorenstein in boys indoor track, Maggie Brock in girls ice hockey and Kylie Grassi in girls basketball.
So to congratulate the South athletes as well, who have also received the Patriot Ledger All-Stars, Ella Gray from indoor track, Carter Nevelus from indoor track and Peja Andrews from basketball.
At North High School, there's been Thursday Night Lights. This event highlights seniors, athletes and students as they drive by the school as staff and coaches cheer them on. The first Thursday Night Light was a huge success. And this Thursday night from 8:20 PM to 8:40 PM, the Eagles will continue their social distance drive there.
And on Thursday as well, South will have their own Thursday Night Light. Join them on Thursday again at 8:00 PM at the stadiums and fields.
So these are two social media pages on Instagram just celebrating the seniors of both North and South High School. Seniors are encouraged to fill out their Google form below on the Instagram pages to post everyone's plan for the next year.
And this is a quote that I personally volunteer at the Plymouth Center for the Arts and they sent us an email and I thought this quote fit perfectly for our situation. So seek goodness everywhere and when it is found, bring it out of its hiding place and let, and let it be free and unshamed. In the time of your life, live so that in the wondrous time you shall not add to the misery and sorrow of the world, but shall smile to what infinite delight and mystery of it.
And then we just want to say thank you to all the staff at Plymouth South High School and Plymouth North High School as this week is Teacher Appreciation Week, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
We love them. Keep them coming. Okay, moving along. We have a policy adoption relative to the student handbook provisions. Dr. Maestis.
Yes, we have a student handbook revisions that we are making relative to the last few months and how that impacts the student handbook and those guidelines that we have for our students. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Campbell and he has an overview for us this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Maestis. Nice job, girls, Karen and Alex. Hard following you. I am going to share my screen as well so I can speak to the specifics so everyone can see it. So as, hmm, it's not moving. My apologies. As you know, last, last time we met, we brought before you some recommended revisions to our high school handbook specifically around final examinations and class rank and grades. We have another recommendation for you this evening for freshmen, sophomores and junior class. We met all last week. Principals, coordinators, directors went through this. Given the circumstances that we've been dealing with, both our students and our families, and feel that this is the best reflection of what we should be doing. So I'm just going to go through this briefly and happy to take any questions afterwards, obviously. So in terms of final exams, typically we'd be scheduling our final exams, as you know, in June. Given the circumstances, obviously with school being out since March 13th, our recommendation is that we do not administer any final exams for the 2019, 2020 school year. In terms of class rank and grades, just like last time, all student handbook language applies to the classes of 2021 through 2023 regarding class rank. However, due to the COVID-19 situation and the remote learning that's been taking place, only first semester courses, those grades as well as full year courses that are typically calculated in rank will be applied towards rank for the 2019, 2020 school year. So any courses that are semester courses for the second half of the year wouldn't, but everything else would apply given the circumstances. And I'll go through this specifically. So as you can see here, given the fact that our remote learning will have taken place for 52 of 167 school days. So really we've had 167 school days. If you take into consideration that March 13th through April 6th was not mandatory. At that time, as you know, we closed our schools on March 13th. We immediately put together a remote learning opportunity which we presented to the school committee, I believe the following Monday, and explained the direction from the Department of Education at that time was that this is an optional opportunity for students that we were not given permission to initiate remote learning. And that changed after April 6th. So when you really look at the breakdown of our school year after June 19th, we will have 167 school days and those also take into consideration our remote learning days. So given that fact, we feel that the first semester should reflect a larger percentage of the grade distribution in terms of the calculation of the students' overall grades. But we're also mindful of that any system that we put in place should not penalize students that participate. It should only support them and promote their overall success. And we're also very particular mindful of the students who perhaps were failing when we left after the first semester. So to make this as equitable and fair as possible, our recommendation, as I said, is for full year courses as well as the first semester courses to be calculated in, if those are courses that were typically calculated to GPA. Okay? The weight distribution typically is 50/50, as you know, 50 for the first semester, 50 for the second. But 70% of our overall academic year would have been during the first semester. The other 30%, or just over 30% actually, maybe about 31%, has been done in a remote learning situation. So our recommendation is that first quarter and second quarter cumulatively are worth 70% of the student's overall grade. And quarter three and quarter four would be, would be calculated as 15% each for those quarters. So 15% for quarter three, which just ended, and 15% for quarter four, which just begun today. So I wanted to show you some examples of what that would look like. So here's a, here's a simple chart here, example of some final grade determination. So if I was a student and I had an 80 average, and I'll highlight that there on your screen there. If I had an 80 average quarter one and quarter two going into the second semester and I passed both of my, and then I passed both quarter three and quarter four based on the work that my teachers provided and I, you know, I posted those, those work opportunities successfully. They were deemed as complete and I received a passing grade. My grade at the end of the year would go up to an 86. If I failed to do that one term, whatever reason, my grade would stay an 80. And if I failed to do that both terms, specifically not doing any of that work, which is few and far between, I have to tell you, my grade would go down by 70 to a 74 overall grade. That would be taken into consideration, this weight distribution, which I highlight up here for you, okay? So a student that receives a pass for any term would have 100 calculated into that term three or term four grade, but only at 15% of the overall grade, okay? So, and then a student who received a fail, did not participate in the work and did not complete it after, you know, multiple attempts for teachers and everyone to initiate on our behalf for the students. But we, you know, once we realized that the student really wasn't doing any work, which again is few and far between, that student would receive a 59 for that term. Okay? So I threw a few other scenarios on here for you to look at. So student A, quarter one, received a 95. They received a quarter, in quarter two, they received an 85 for a particular course. They pass both term three and four, their grade would go up to a 93. So that actually goes up by three points if you average that out because first semester you would average 90, it actually would go up by three points. So you can see this system, this system we feel is the most equitable way to approach this. And it also gives students an opportunity to, you know, to incentivize them to participate in this remote learning opportunity, particularly for the students that were failing. So if you have a student who had a 45 average at the end of first and second quarter and they, and they pass both quarters, meaning that they participate in the work and they engage, they engage in the learning opportunities that we've provided through the teachers, then they will get a 62 and pass. So we've run the numbers as a school department through the administration and we feel confident and based on not only students' performance in the first half of the year, but also how students have been completing the work thus far, that this will be a much more equitable and positive outlook for the end of this year. And this is our recommendation of administration. And also the Commissioner of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has encouraged all districts to do everything they can to incentivize students for participating in remote learning and to also to eliminate as many students failing this year, particularly because of the remote learning experience. So that's why we're putting this kind of incentive in it and we're also doing everything in our power to reach out to students who aren't engaging in the activities that, that have been taking place, which again is few and far between. And the last thing I just want to say is there's a difference between even though the students may be receiving a pass and a fail on their report cards, it's important for those students to know that your final transcript will have actual letter grades because these will be calculated and transferred for transcript purposes, okay? So when, when schools look at those transcripts, for the most part, they're going to see numeric, they're going to see, excuse me, letter grades, A, B, C, et cetera, based on this formula, which is very similar to what we would do during a typical school year. So that's all, those are our recommendations. So again, to summarize it, we're recommending to eliminate final exams and this is our recommendation in terms of quarter three and quarter four having a heavier weight for the first half of the year and 15% for each term for terms three and four. And I'm happy to take any questions that anyone may have.
Okay, Dr. Campbell, committee members, questions, clarifications? I'm not, I don't, I don't, I don't see anybody on the screen, so I don't know if anybody. Speak up if you need it, I can answer you.
I'll close that up then so you can see, so it's better.
All right. Any questions from anybody? This, this will take a motion in a minute. Chris, I want to ask you something though. So you know, the student who has 45 and then he ends up, if he passes and passes, he ends up with 62 from the scenario that you presented. Where does that 17 points come from?
So when you factor it, so the 45 is 70% of their overall grade. I don't have it in front of me, so if it's a 40, was it a 45 and 45, Jim?
Here's 45, 45, pass, pass.
For the first half of the year, they're going to receive a 45%. That 45% will be weighted 70% of their overall grade. The second, the third and fourth term would be 100%.
Okay, that's, all right, now I understand.
But at 15% for each term, so it's
Now I know how you got it. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Michelle.
I think my only question is, and I think it makes complete and total sense to me, but I'm just through the chair wondering how Alex and Karen feel about this. If they feel comfortable, you don't have to.
I'm glad that, that we're doing it this way because at first I was like a little nervous that the first, that nothing, nothing from term four, term three would be like put into our final grade. And I wanted something to go in since we were doing all this work anyway. And so I'm glad that, I think the 15%, 15% makes a lot of sense and I think it's fair to everyone, so.
Thank you, Alex, for saying that. We really wanted to be mindful of the students that were both struggling as well as the students who've been working hard all years, particularly in terms three and four. So thank you for saying that.
Any other questions? All right, well, you've heard the recommendation of administration. This is an action item. Michelle.
I move that we approve the changes to the handbook for 2019, 2020 school year.
Is there a second? Lee is the second. Any questions on the motion? Okay, I will call for the vote then as it shows up on my screen. Margie.
Yes.
Bedna. Michelle.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
All right. Bedna, you're Microsoft, but I assume that was a yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Dr. Sorenson, may I interject for one moment? This has nothing to do with the, the motion or the, but I just received a text message from Mrs. Reardon, our science coordinator, I felt it was important to share this. She said that, "Give Alex Godfrey a shout out. She's a virtual state science and engineering fair result tomorrow." So we wish she luck, Alex.
Well, that's wonderful. We have fame.
Good luck, guys.
Go, Alex.
Thank you.
Good luck and we're all behind you, okay?
All right, Gary, your, your recommendation on participating in school choice.
Yes, this is the time that we have the opportunity to take a look at Mass General Law, Chapter 76, Section 12B, which is a provision that the school committees across Commonwealth of Massachusetts have the option to vote in favor or to vote against the school choice option. School choice allows students from outside the residential district of a community to be able to attend a school that is not normally their home district. The dilemma with school choice is we would probably get about a third of the per pupil expenditure for that child if they were to be able to attend from outside. So the school committee has the option to be able to allow this. In my 20 years of being in Plymouth, we have never gone down this path. And Dr. Sorenson, I'll turn it back to you and
Okay. I am going to, at this moment, declare that the public hearing for school choice is open and I'm going to leave it open until we reach the end of our meeting when we take comments from community members. If anybody wants to speak to the school committee about school choice, it'll be time to email that in, text. How does, how do they get it to you? Peg.
Email.
They mail it, Peg, and then we'll bring it up later on in the meeting. So the hearing is open at this point. We're going to move to the next agenda item, which is the revised bus fee schedule. Dr. Maestis.
Yes, as we have all realized over the, over this tail end of the school year, we are cognizant that we have an abbreviated bus schedule this year. As a result of that abbreviation due to COVID-19 and the pandemic situation, we have taken a look at our bus fee schedule for next year. And Mr. Costin has put together a breakdown and a revised schedule to be able to give parents some relief for next year and use what we did not use in transportation fees to apply it to next year's bus fee. So Mr. Costin, if you would like to step in, that would be great.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Maestis. As, as we all know, this year we, we've essentially finished early and really about a third of the year for students that are not being transported. We took a look at a couple of things. Number one is we looked at, as you all know, we are not paying our bus transportation contractor. And again, this is regular transportation. We're not paying our contractor the service after May, March 13th, which kept a balance in the revolving account, the bus fee revolving account where parents pay into. Recognizing that there is still some value and funds that families have deposited in there, we felt that we should look at reducing those funds for next year. So I've worked at it and looked at what I believe we can afford going forward next year and also I think being fair to the parents, giving them a discount for next year. I will also say that seniors, if seniors wanted a refund, that would not be a problem for bus fees. However, we have hardly any seniors that take the bus. So it's, it's not a, we have about 25 seniors who have paid for the buses. In addition, what we did is if you look on the application, we extended the payment schedule out by more than, more than a month or about a month and a half so that parents would be able to get a discount if they were able to pay in July. And after that, the regular fee rate would apply, but all the fees have been reduced substantially. And you can see on the spreadsheet I put together that it really cuts in half what parents would have to pay for next year. And we feel it's something that we really need to do. We, we do anticipate that there probably will be more free and reduced students next year. Putting together applications, which means they will receive free transportation. And, and again, we, we work with every family on making sure that, you know, student gets into school and that we're able to, to, you know, get the kids where they need to be. So I would respectfully request the school committee to take a look at approving this so we can get this out and put it on their website.
All right, thank you for that explanation. Committee members, questions, observations, comments? Mr. Morgan.
Yeah, I had a suggestion from a community member in regards to this action item. Considering the possible budget shortfall that we're going to be facing next year to maybe put a section on the application checkbox where someone may choose to pay the full price and have the difference go directly to the school department budget. So someone threw that out to me, so I'll just share it as, as an option. They do have a thing on the Mass income tax where if you want to pay extra taxes, you can check a box. I don't think many people do it, but that was a, a suggestion from a community member and I just thought I'd just pass it on.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Sure.
That's, I mean, that's, that's a great, great suggestion. The only issue is that these funds are dedicated and they would have to go into a transportation revolving account. They could not be applied for anything else.
I was wondering if that might be the case. Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Costin.
You're welcome.
Mr. Costin, let me ask you a question that may, may save you a bunch of phone calls. On the, on the application, under advanced payment, you have advanced payment discount rate and it's clear. The next column is regular rate and it doesn't use the word discount. So even though the math shows you that it's a discount, I could imagine you're going to get phone calls that how come regular rate isn't discounted? And you're going to have to say, well, it is discounted. Why don't you just put the word in there?
Good suggestion. We'll, we'll take care of that.
Right. Thank you. Any other, any other questions about this? All right, this is an action item, so committee members.
I'll make a motion and approve the fee schedule for the buses.
We have a motion. Ms. Burgess is the second on that motion. Are there any questions on the motion? Everybody understands? Okay, I am ready to call for the vote as it shows up on my screen. Ms. Burgess.
Yes.
Ms. Haywood.
Yes.
Ms. Badger.
Yes.
That's funny, your mic was off, but I still heard you. All right. Ms. Hunt.
Yes.
Mr. Morgan.
Yes.
Ms. Trusselli.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Superintendent search process. We had a busy week. Go ahead, Dr. Maestis.
Yes, I will actually throw up a softball and hit it over to Mrs. Fry.
Thank you.
On my screen, you have to hit it up to her. She's right there.
It's going to get, it's, it's on its way this way.
It's there. Like when the kids play catch on the screens.
Throw up, I was wondering where you were going with that.
Thank you, Dr. Sorenson and Dr. Maestis. I would like to start by thanking, obviously, Michelle, Jim and Margie were on the committee for the school committee, but it was a committee of 13 and they put in a great deal of time last week. And it was a very fruitful process, but I'd like to thank the entire committee. Karen also sat on it and she had a great perspective. And a final thank you to Ms. Grimes, who has been a lifeline with me with Zoom and setting up all the different logistics. So I did want to say thank you for that. We interviewed six candidates last week and three finalists did emerge from that process. One was a sitting superintendent, one is a sitting high school principal and one is Dr. Chris Campbell, who is one of our finalists. This weekend I did receive a phone call from, an email, excuse me, from one of the finalists. After we named the finalists on Friday, I let them know that he decided to take his name out of the search. He was so respectful of the process and thought Plymouth was fantastic, but when he met with his school committee, he did not feel comfortable leaving them in the times of the pandemic and said to please keep him in mind in the future. So we are down to two finalists, Dr. Campbell, as I mentioned, and Eric Chofy, who is from out of state, is from Georgia. So that is where we're at in the process and I'll be talking to you folks about the next stages, what it looks like with the two finalists moving forward from here.
Okay. Thank you for that report. The committee will be discussing this at a future time. Reports and proposals from the superintendent.
Yes, I have six things to report on this evening. Just want to let you all know that we had our diversity committee meeting last week on Zoom and it went very well. It was, it's one of the best meetings that I go to, even virtually, it just worked out very well. So just want to highlight that group and the work that we're doing to be able to, to shape our diversity awareness in the Plymouth Public Schools. And, and for that, for that matter, even, even the community, you know. So I think it's, it's, it's working out well. The next item that I have is relative to strategic planning. We have met and are continuing to We have met and are continuing to meet, you know, we've maximized our use of Zoom and we are getting ready to release a survey that will go out to the different stakeholder groups across the community of Plymouth. We've got that hammered out last Friday with a lot of work from our sub, our subcommittee for the survey, but we also have other subcommittees that are just analyzing our resources, analyzing past information and data that we have on student achievement, you know, surveys that we have looked at over time. So we have a great deal of work going on with that process. The thing that I would like, or item I'd like to just let the school committee know tonight is, based on the pandemic issues that we've had, we're going to probably see a delay of, of the real, the release of the strategic plan. It'll probably come to us probably late July, early August because of the delay that we've had. Our, our goal was to try to get it out into June, but we're going to probably have to push it out a month, month and a half because of the delay. So it's been, we've adjusted well. This is a, you know, we, we have a stakeholder strategic planning committee. And we've also had a number of meetings with our administrative team to be able to collect information and data that we then take to our strategic planning group. So that has gone, has gone well. And I'm very thankful to the people that have given their time to work with us and the feedback is, has been, has been really encouraging as far as the process. I just want to remind everyone that, that this week is teacher appreciation week. I know our student representatives did highlight that. There are a number of events that are happening throughout the community virtually. And also, you know, celebratory in a sense of drive-bys and things of that nature. So I'm sure you'll be hearing about all those this week. One of the things that I want to highlight, and I know there are a number of events that are going on virtually for our families or students. I had the opportunity to watch Panther TV last Friday night. And I just want you to know that, that that was just outstanding. And I, I did reach out to our, our staff and our students that were behind that production. And they, you know, it's amazing to see the skills and, and, and the talent that, that you can see, that these are transferable skills. This was done all, you know, through technology and through the internet. So we're just grateful to see our students. And I think Panther TV was, was, was an example, but there are many, many examples of our teachers and staff, students using technology to be able to communicate with our students and produce quality work and be challenged and, and meet those challenges. The, the next item that I have is just an announcement on May the 9th. You might have seen flyers on, on communications coming out from the district and around the community of Plymouth. All the Plymouth baseball teams, whether it's recreation, whether it's North and South softball, they have all come together to collect food drop-off at Plymouth North High School on May the 9th. So if all this food is going to go to the South Shore Community Action Council. So what they're trying to do is fill the diamond at Plymouth North High School with food. So they will have student athletes and volunteers take food that will be dropped off. They will then pick that food up, bring it over to the diamond. They will stack, they will place it. But their goal is to fill the infield with, with food. And that food will then be trucked over with some of our vehicles over to PCR, to Old Ray Street, where South Shore Community Action Council is just down the road. So that, that is a fantastic event. And as you all know, the, the food supply at South Shore Community Action Council, as well as the Coalition for the Homeless in Kingston, those supplies are running low. And they're looking for any opportunities. So this is a collaborative effort from all of our baseball softball teams throughout Plymouth to be able to help replenish that. And the last item that I have tonight is relative to graduation for seniors. And I just want to send a message out to our seniors that I know you're anxiously waiting a video from me. And I'm anxiously ready to send a video to you. But we are waiting on some guidance and some permission and some permits and a bunch of other stuff. So I will keep your appetites hungry for information. And as soon as we have it, I'm hoping, as soon as we get information for you on what we're able to do because of the time that we're in, our senior class, and I'll repeat this again, our senior class will be the first to get an email or a posting that will be dedicated to you. Okay? So that's what our direction is now, and I just want you all to know.
It looks like we lost Dr. Maestas.
We'll rise. Dr. Sorensen, back to you.
Okay, we lost you at the end of that. Thank you for that report. Any questions to Dr. Maestas about his report?
Yeah, I have one. I just, is there going to be a repeat on that Panther TV?
You know, Ms. Burgess, I believe, and maybe our students may know better, Ms. Frye may know better, or Dr. Campbell, but I believe that you can actually go on and see it.
It's usually archived on the EdTV website, Margie, but I can, we can ask Brian or Evan and find out. I know they usually archive it in a certain place, so I'll find the link and send it over to you. Someone wrote in, it'll be playing on the EdTV channel and on the EdTV Facebook channel. Brian, Mr. Riddan, Brian's behind the camera.
Dr. Maestas, I have a quick question. On Saturday, what time should we come by North to drop off food?
I think they're doing it nine to five.
All day? Okay, nine to five.
And they, they have cycled in, and, and that's, you know, Dr. Sorensen, just so that everyone knows, any event that is connected to the Plymouth Public Schools, we are, we are really, really strict on following social distancing guidelines, masks, all of that. So please help us to make these opportunities work and to make it a good experience for everybody.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that.
Dr. Sorensen.
Mr. Morgan?
In regards to graduation for the seniors, does that, any changes in that? Does that need to come before the school committee or no?
The only thing that we would have to do, Mr. Morgan, is if we had a change to the calendar, which we're trying right now to keep that the same. So right now, that would be the same. But I, I sent you all a recording this weekend outlining some details. I will, along with the senior class advisors and both high school principals, be supplying school committee members a very detailed outline of exactly what will be happening and what your commitment is on that day. So we will, we will be working with you, Mr. Morgan, to make sure that you're really up to date on what you, what we need to be doing. Okay?
Great, thank you. I did get the, the audio. So thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions to Dr. Maestas about his report?
Oh, the last thing, Dr. Sorensen, I cut my hair tonight by myself.
Did you cut it yourself?
I did, yeah. I wouldn't tell, I wouldn't tell my wife that.
Yeah, alcohol involved.
Dr. Campbell's is much better. He does a better job.
I should just let it go. I'm, I'm going to, next week, you'll see a different haircut.
Retirement, Ms. Frye?
Yes, we have one retirement to report. Brenda Cavalo, who was a para educator at West for 21 years.
Ms. Hunt?
Am I muted? No. Can you hear me? Yes. On behalf of the Plymouth School Committee, I'd like to thank these individuals for their service to Plymouth Public Schools and wish them a happy retirement.
Thank you. Reports and proposals from committee members. The floor is open.
I have a couple, couple.
Michelle first, then, then Kim.
Mine is just really quick. Tomorrow night, if anybody is looking for something to fill their schedule, if you've all been to Yama Shoa before, they're attempting Yama Shoa, right, tomorrow, Venna? Are you telling me it's not?
Yes, yes.
Venna was looking at me. I thought she said no. It's tomorrow night and it's always a beautiful service. And so I encourage you to join. There's, there's information on the No Place for Hate Facebook page with the Zoom meeting and everything. So I just.
Okay, thank you.
Wonderful event.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hunt?
Okay, so there's a couple of, like, I talked about the MASC events, the virtual events the other day. And tomorrow at, I believe it's at 11:30. I know I'm signed up for it. There's a meeting with Senator Markey with school committee members, anybody that wants to join. And then there's going to be another greet, another meet and greet, like the one that we did two weeks ago, and that is coming up. You have to bear, you, you would have gotten an email about it. I, I can't attend, so I didn't put it in. Is it, no, tomorrow is the legislative one.
Oh, sorry.
There's a meet and greet. I should have written the day down because I'm looking.
But you told us that, you said that we, we, we'll get an email or have.
Well, you, you should have already gotten it.
Okay.
I got it today, as a matter of fact. It's this.
Okay.
I can forward it to everybody. How's that? Okay.
Well, if we already have it, but okay, sure.
No, Margie said you can get it, so I just wrote it to everybody. And then the other thing is, I don't know if Garrett, Dr. Maestas was going to mention it or not, but there's a fundraiser on Saturday for the Plymouth One Fund. And it's, it's Coachella. What it is, is it's all the local bands from seven to nine are going to be playing a big concert. It's going to be on PAC TV, Facebook Live, and YouTube. And there's going to be different fundraising opportunities, or you could go right online and donate directly to the Plymouth One Fund. I know I have a t-shirt that I ordered that I have to pick up at the Chamber of Commerce, but there's a, it seems like it's going to be a good day. The Faze, all of our, you know, anybody that, a lot of the people we know from school and music department are going to be playing as well. The Lindsays, Susan Lindsay is one of our music teachers. Her band is going to be there, so there's going to be a lot of, it should be entertaining.
Hey, Sabella.
Yep, there's a ton. There's.
Yeah, I know.
I forgot to mention that.
The Faze are going to be there. All the Faze are going to be.
I just said that, yeah, the Faze and then the Lindsays, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Good music there.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hunt, for those updates and reports. PYDC.
Yes.
What?
I did go. I didn't see anybody else, but I did go. There's pretty well, things were, have been canceled, but I'll go through a few things. There was a hot, a hub grant, yeah. A grant on behavior, for behavioral health issues for, let's see, it said the Plymouth schools are involved and they're going to work with the agencies and connect with people with, connect people with resources, telehealth and food resources. And then they give a number at the police station, 830-4218, extension 261, if somebody needs resources. The, the youth conference is on six, four, is vertical. So it's called Be in the Know, and it's for all high school students. Interface update. There's a $25,000 CNA grant. Plymouth is getting $16,000 a year. The cost for referral is $225. Rent info is needed about, oh, they want to know if anybody has any grant information that can help Kelly to apply. HEAL, H-E-A-L, is a coalition that's going to be, is willing to work with the PYDC. It reduces opioid use by 40% over three years. They have eight communities. Plymouth and Brockton is one, is two of them. There's overdose education and knock hand distribution, initiation of retention on meds, actually keeping people alive and safer opioid prescribing and dispensing. Board of Health, Barry Potvin, said about smoking and vaping. Rest, there's respiratory issues and COVID increases, you know, this. In the 18 to 49 age group, obesity, they said that there's much cardiovascular disease, diabetes and kidney disease. And Healthy Plymouth spoke about shopping in school lunches, a mini April vacation they had over the weekend. They, there's a video contest. They're working with PAC TV. They're maintaining the school gardens. And the teens at Algonquin will, will be working at Colchester Farms again this year. If something happens and they cannot, they'll, then they'll just work on the school gardens. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. A lot of details. Thank you. Good stuff. The building committee is the next item on the agenda.
We didn't have a building committee meeting.
Okay.
Normally it'd be scheduled next Thursday. I haven't heard if they're having it or not.
No, I don't. It, it wasn't last month either.
They didn't have one last month.
The town is having trouble. On the town side, they aren't scheduling as many meetings, just the, the ones for permits and really, the really, the stuff that has to be done quickly. But the other ones, like even the energy committee, we haven't met either.
Okay.
Many of us haven't.
Personnel, Ms. Frye?
Yes, we haven't had many, obviously, appointments during this time off. These were prior to. We had two classified appointments. We've also been in our staffing season. We've approved one paid leave of absence and two unpaid leave of absences. And then we've had four resignations. And the only reason for the paid one, it's our union president position that we hold based on the contract.
Okay, any, any questions to Mrs. Frye on her report? Okay. Let me ask you a quick question. And, and, you know, we have that, we've been having that sick leave bank at 7:30 in the morning at the beginning of the month, and we're not having one this month, are we?
No, we're not. Based on the governor's recommendation for the month of, the time since the closure, we haven't been billing sick time for people. So I don't think we'll have the need for the sick bank, but in our discussion in executive session, we'll be addressing that. So I may be able to add a little bit more. But we don't have the meeting this Wednesday.
Thank you.
At seven, we meet every month at 7:30.
Okay, all business, committee members, anything about all business cloud? Okay, not saying any, any, any participation, anything to come up under new business this evening? Okay, moving along, man. We are now up to the minutes. And so we'll do the minutes of March the 16th. What's the pleasure of the committee?
Okay, I'll move it.
Margie moves it. Is there a second? Michelle is the second. Are there any questions? Okay. We'll take the vote on approving the minutes. We'll start with Margie.
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Can I intercede? Michelle, are those the notes that you wanted to?
No, it's the 30th.
Oh, I thought it was the 16th. Okay, gotcha.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Selly?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
And Ms. Haywood?
Yes.
Everybody voted for the minutes of the 16th. And now we have the executive session minutes of the 30th.
Actually, I think Lee may have been right. My note may have been in the wrong place.
It was the 16th. It was.
I, yeah. Can we go back? Can I?
We just have to amend it because it was listed that I had asked Nate, Dr. Nate, but it was actually Michelle. If we could just amend those and rectify.
Somebody has to clarify for me. I'm not sure what you're saying.
So if you go to page two of the notes, it just underneath the bullets that Nate, Dr. Nate was talking about.
Yep.
It says, Mrs. Trisselli, and it just should be me. That's all.
Okay, ah, okay, all right.
Sorry, for, for some reason, my notes were in the next one.
Okay, so Peg got that, all right, so, uh, we can now move on to the minutes of the executive session minutes of, of, uh, March the 30th. I'll take a motion. Ms., Ms. Badger?
I just have one, um, edit, and it, it goes on both this one and the next set of notes. There's a period after Lee's name and was absent, and just doesn't need to be there. But other than that, I'm, I'll move.
Okay, you'll move that, seconded by? Uh, Ms. Hunt is the second. Any other questions on those minutes? Okay, then I'm going to take the vote to approve the minutes as presented. Ms. Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Trusselli? Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
And Ms. Haywood?
Yes.
Everybody has to approve the minutes of 30th, and now we have the minutes of April the 1st. Ms., Ms. Badger? Un, unmute yourself. Michelle, unmute yourself.
Sorry, my face bar wasn't working for some reason. It does that every once in a while. Um, I just, it's the same edit that I made last time, but I moved to, um, accept the minutes with, um, the edit.
Okay, seconded by?
I'll second.
Uh, Ms. Hunt is the second on that. Ms. Hunt is the second on that, I see Peg looking. Questions on that motion? Okay, I'm going to, uh, take the vote then on the minutes of, uh, April the 1st. Ms. Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Trusselli?
abstain?
Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
Ms. Haywood?
Yes.
Okay, we won't abstention, everybody else in favor. And now we have the executive session minutes of April the 1st. Is there a motion?
Yes, I'll move it.
Thank you, seconded by?
I'll second it.
Mr. Morgan is the second, thank you. Any questions on the executive session minutes of April the 1st? I don't see any hands, so I will take the vote on approving those minutes. Ms. Burgess?
Yes.
Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Trusselli?
abstain.
Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
Ms. Haywood?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I just saw that, um, Mrs. Burgess was absent.
From what?
That's right, you, you were, that was the meeting that you attended half of, I think.
It was the last two.
Huh?
I believe it was the last one as well. It said that you and I were both absent.
No, I was there. I don't remember coming in half.
Uh, one meeting, I, I, maybe it might have been the 16th, you, you were in the beginning, and then you, we lost you.
Oh, I don't know anything about it.
It was the 16th, it wasn't, it wasn't April 1st.
Oh, I was gonna say.
Yeah, so you were there.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Morgan. Okay.
I'll make that correction.
Yeah, and you know, technically, she can still, I, I read somewhere that the, she still can technically vote, she doesn't have to abstain, even if she wasn't there.
You're absolutely correct.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, so at this point, uh, Ms. Grimes, has anybody, uh, has anybody communicated with you regarding school choice?
No.
Uh, we have no participation on school choice. I will declare the public hearing closed, and now I will entertain a motion, uh, to not participate in school choice.
I'll move it.
Ms. Burgess moves it, seconded by Ms. Badger. Is there a question? Okay, then I'm gonna take the vote. Uh, Ms. Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Badger?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Trusselli?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
Ms. Haywood?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So we, we will not be participating in school choice, uh, we never have, so it's consistent. Uh, uh, Ms. Grimes, has anybody else, uh, communicated with the school committee during our meeting?
No, Dr. Thorndson, I have no.
No other community input. Uh, so now I am going to, uh, entertain a motion to go in executive session for the purposes of discussing the memorandum of agreement and also, uh, personnel strategy with non-union employees. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Morgan.
I'll make a motion to go in executive session.
I'll second.
Uh, we have a motion by Mr. Morgan, settled by Mrs. Trusselli, to go into executive session for the purposes stated. And, uh, I will take the vote. Ms. Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Badger?
Yes.
You guys are jumping around here on my screen.
That happened to me all last week.
Ms. Trusselli?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
Ms. Haywood?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. The school committee will be going into executive session for the purposes stated. At the end of executive session, we will come back out into open session, and the only business that will occur at that time is to adjourn the meeting. So, uh, we're gonna be moving over to executive session now.